Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Norwood Planning Board for the January 27th, 2025. We are here at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street. We have a quorum. Rob Bamber is unavailable tonight, so I'll be stepping in because the Vice Chair, Debbie Homewood, is remote. Debbie? So, we do have a public hearing to start the night, special permit site plan approval, 699 Washington Street. And I do have a notice, which I will read as a clerk. All right. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Board of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on January 27th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, at the request of Mackey and Mackey LLC, representing JKM Property 4 LLC regarding property located at 699 Washington Street, located at Map 1, Block 13, Lot 5, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the Central Business Zoning District and Mixed Use Overlay District. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062. It will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit pursuant to Section 9.4.3, the section applicability of the Norwood zoning bylaws for renovation of an empty bank building for mixed commercial slash residential use. The Board will also conduct a site plan review pursuant to Section 10.5. Any zoning relief that may be required and adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the Board. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the Board. Plans are in file with this application in the office of the Planning Board and may be requested by emailing comdev@norwoodma.gov or by calling 781-762-1240, extension 6055, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. Okay. Attorney Mackey, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, Debbie. Phil Mackey, 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 1256 Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts. He's counsel for it on behalf of the applicant. And with me is Sean Murphy, the Principal of JKM 4, I believe, of properties, the owner of the building, and man who's proposing to redevelop the site. What I'm giving you is the written long version of what I'm going to summarize with your permission as to how we meet the criteria. If you're going to have to somehow disengage the computer. As to how we meet the zoning requirements and a couple of items that we do need to discuss with the Board, the Department Head Review, and the comments of Ilex Jones and the Planning Department. So, again, to kind of summarize, we're in the middle of the central, well, we're kind of the edge of the Central Business District, but nonetheless, we're there. And we are within the Mixed Use Overlay District, which is what we're here for you for for the special permit. Basically, at the northwest corner of Washington Day Street, I'm sure everyone here remembers where the Bank of America was. It's that building. What we're proposing to do is leave the exterior of the building effectively unchanged. There will be three, or excuse me, there'll be two new doorways in the back to service the two of the townhouse units. The third will be serviced by the existing back door. But other than that, the facade remains the same. There is no additional stories. The bank will, the bank building will look like the bank building at the end of this. There'll be considerable construction inside. Basically, what we're asking to do is put, it's in, it's shown on your plans. I wasn't sure if it's going to be up on the screen or not. Basically, along the back of the building, there are three townhouse units. And on the first floor, the majority of the front is commercial, as is required under the MUOD. And there is one conventional, if you will, single-story or single-level apartment. And then on the second floor, there are a variety of studio ones and twos, for a total of eight units. So, it's not a, it's not bringing 100 units to the center of town. It's a fairly low-key, mixed-use development. And if we can rent out the basement, there are commercial spaces in the basement as well. It's not prime, but there are people who are looking for, you know, fairly low-cost office space, which this could fill that niche nicely, and they'd still be in the center of town. So, that's what the goal is with the project. And I summarized the zoning table here. It's also in the plans. It's a little hard to read there. Basically, we're not changing everything, and we have met the basic criteria of the zoning table. I listed in here waivers that came up through the Department Head Review and through our application. The most significant one, which we're asking, hopefully, that you find in favor of, is a waiver of approximately eight feet. Because if you look at the floor plans, I think the page that Joe's on shows them, the commercial space goes back approximately 52 feet. That's, it's off by a couple of inches, and so I've rounded up to 52 feet because basically if the drywall gets put on thicker by accident, it could be 52 as opposed to 51 and 10 inches. And so, other than that, though, we comply with all of the requirements of the MUOD for special permit. And let's just show on there. Basically, the line on this piece goes right like that. So, a little bit of a single-story apartment is within what's known as the commercial front. But to knock it to the 60-foot line basically makes that space not viable. The other two waivers that we're asking for is to allow less than 10% of the land area to be dedicated to outdoor amenity spaces. But basically, I would note that Section 9.4 allows you to do this in consideration of other factors. In this particular case, one of the factors is most specifically being providing outdoor seating areas, which we have provided, basically three areas, two out toward the front and one in the back. And as you may be well aware, there's not a lot of room in this space. The whole lot is less than a half acre. Currently, it is paved basically from edge to edge to provide some landscaping. We are removing pavement. We are increasing impervious. I can't tell you this ton. Again, it's a very tight spot. But the landscaping plan shows you pretty much what we're doing. And the goal being is in the far back, if you're at Washington Street, looking in towards the lot, the back right corner has a seating area, the front right corner has a seating area, and to the intersection corner, for lack of a better area, back, better word, the front is being converted into benches and pervious pavement and landscaping. So, we think that trade-off certainly falls within the intent of the bylaw and would allow you to grant the waiver if so, if you're so inclined. We have another waiver, another waiver request, and that is to not submit drainage calculations. We went over this with Mark Ryan. Again, we're not, we're actually removing impervious, and he supports the waiver of the drainage calculations. He didn't feel he needed them. He knows what he wants done on the site. And I believe Ilex Jones put that actually in her memo, so you don't just have to take my word for it, that Mark's good with it. And then the last I put in there, because we had some discussion, we believe that the parking, as shown, complies with everything. Unfortunately, the bylaws, when it comes to parking, is kind of clear as mud. So, I'd rather have a discussion with you now than get down the process and someone go, "Whoa, you didn't tell me what was going on. How can you possibly do this?" So, under the MUOD, it is very clear what you need for the residences. And in this particular case, it is one space per one-bedroom studio and one and a half for everything else. We don't have any threes, so it's ones and twos. So, that comes out to 11 spaces. You end up rounding up. We have that. We actually are providing, Paul told, 23 spaces, but some of those are street parking. You then look to the rest of the bylaw for commercial parking, and kind of depending on where you read, we need to provide none, some, or we can use the municipal lot. Specifically, if you look at the beginning of the parking bylaw, it talks about parking in the Central Business District, and it says if you have a demand of less than 20 parking spaces, you don't need to provide parking. Our commercial demand is 12, so 12 is less than 20. Arguably, we don't need to provide any. Other parts of the bylaw would indicate that that's not quite right. So, again, I'm bringing this up for discussion. I believe we meet it. If we don't, you are authorized, under the parking section, parking regulations, to, by way of special permit coupled to site plan, reduce the parking required for the site. The site has been reviewed, and I'll let Sarah speak for the Planning Department rather than speak for her, but fire, engineering, we're physically at the meeting. They didn't have any issues with our parking plan. And so respectfully, I think we are well within the purview for you to grant the requested relief. However, we determine that as most applicable. As I mentioned before, Sean, as representative of JKM Property 4, is the owner and the applicant for this, so should you grant favorably, it will be binding on both the owner and the applicant, and we'll run with the land. The next couple of pages of the memo are basically a reiteration of the zoning bylaw in case we have to discuss them. But to go through the requirements themselves, again, very briefly, the MUOD approval standard is basically the first one, and this is considered a renovation of a historic building. So, that, that's the section that this falls under, which is 9.4.10.3. Basically, the first one talks about arrangement, design, appearance, dimensions, and how that they, the changes should be minimized, exterior lighting and screening and landscaping should be provided to the extent possible. So, as I mentioned before, the facade of this building isn't changing. So, hopefully, everybody here likes the way the Bank of America building looks. It's going to look the same or better as it does right now. We're not adding anything. We're not changing doors. We're not ripping down things. We're not punching holes in walls. The bank building as architecturally looked the same. If you looked at the photometric plan, you can see all of the lighting is facing down, oriented inwards. There's one light in the back, which we do need for security, but other than that, there's, we're not adding pole lights. We're not, we're not doing anything. We are removing three parking spaces, and that basically has been done so that we can provide an outdoor seating area as well as a screen dumpster area. So, that's, you have to trade off because, again, currently, the parking goes literally from lot line to lot line. The next condition basically says, the proposal that you have to determine, whether the proposal preserves the exterior features to ensure sensitivity and compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods. I'm not going to continue to repeat myself, because a lot of these are very similar. But again, given what was proposed, I don't know how we can be any more compatible, again, assuming you like the building as it is. The third criteria talks about increase in the footprint. There is no increase in the footprint. The fourth criteria talks about whether the reuse would more effectively preserve and enhance the architectural character of the surrounding neighborhood than would be, than would the redevelopment of the site upon demolition or significant exterior modification. When Sean bought this, he looked at a lot of different options to include adding stories on top of the building, just ripping the whole thing down and rebuilding. Some of those could have been, quite honestly, more lucrative. Ripping it down and rebuilding it would have actually been easier because you wouldn't have to worry about a bank vault, a bunch of other things. But that's really not what they bought the building for and not the desire. So, we went this route, where, again, the exterior of the building isn't getting changed. So, we believe that that actually is more in line with the character of the corner and the center of Norwood than putting up, I don't know, it's almost brutalist architecture the way people are building now, square buildings that have no character whatsoever. So respectfully, I think you can find that we meet that criteria. The Section 9 also requires that we meet the general special permit criteria of Section 10.4.2. To run through those, basically, the first one is social, economic, community needs, and the litmus test are residential is more beneficial if it serves housing needs or broadens housing diversity than if it does not. Non-residential is more beneficial if it serves needs of local residents in the town or provides them with economic opportunity rather than not. So, again, we're going to have eight apartments, one studio, a couple of ones, a couple of twos, in a nice building in the center of town. They're not part of a huge complex with every bell and whistle under the roof, or the sauna, I guess is the proper turn of phrase. But in turn, that will provide a more affordable option to, for people to live in a nice place in the center of town. Because they're not paying for a pool, they're not paying for gym, they're paying for a very nice apartment right downtown. As far as non-residential use, regrettably, the way the bank building is built and constructed internally, anybody going in there that would try and take the whole building other than a bank would be very challenged, the vault being one of the main problems because it's effectively dead space. It's got, okay, it's got a, you know, non-ADA door. It's not going anywhere. So, we think by making the commercial space truly what people are looking to rent right up against Washington Street, good visibility, access both to Washington Day Street, we're not removing the drive-thru to keep options open. I would say, though, that we're not looking to put Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks or something that's going to have 15 cars lined up. That's not on the table, but if we ever take it out, it's never going back. So, the, the goal would be to get like a Capital One boutique, I forget what they call it, lounge. I mean, we're not looking for a full-service bank, but, you know, someplace that someone could do some banking, drive up, drop some money off, and leave. Or if that doesn't happen, then we'll take it as it comes. But we do feel the way that the building has been reconfigured, we actually have some viable commercial rental space versus the way it was or is currently, where much of the building is just purely not usable because of the way the walls are, and it was designed to be a bank. Second criteria is circulation. And basically, we are not changing either of the entrances or any of the entrances or exits. We have removed some old sidewalk internally in order to provide landscaping, but we also have exits out the back of the building now, so people aren't going to have to necessarily walk through potential traffic. And we believe that the circulation of the site will be fine. The third criteria is utilities and other public services. There are no unusual problems with this. That's actually one of the criteria, the wording of your bylaw. We've discussed this with both Norwood Electric and the DPW. There will be some work done on site, but that was, is more of a condition of building permit, electrical permits, stormwater management through Mark Ryan. But there's nothing there that is anticipated to be a problem by any of the departments who have reviewed this problem, this project. As far as environmental impacts, we don't anticipate there to be any environmental impacts of this. The only thing we're doing is removing pavement and adding some grade. Not a lot, but generally speaking, we're going in the right direction. As far as land use compatibility, talks about preempting other uses because of the redevelopment. We would respectfully submit that if you allow this redevelopment, it doesn't preempt any other uses of the property. It hopefully will actually encourage the commercial development as well as provide some apartments. As far as visual compatibility, again, we aren't changing anything, so we believe we are totally compatible with the neighborhood. Fiscal act impacts, we anticipate, it's truly up to the assessors, that the redevelopment of the vacant bank building into eight apartments and some rentable commercial space will actually increase the tax base of Norwood. We don't anticipate any of these apartments having families. If so, might be a baby. We're not, there's no room, literally, to have multiple children. So, that will be a self-selecting tenant process, so we don't really anticipate a knee, excuse me, a increase of any town services with regard to this redevelopment. Process, we have been actually at this for well over a year. If you remember, last summer, we withdrew our application for a similar project. We have since revised it downwards, and we believe that having gone through that process, we've come to a very nice development for the corner of Day and Washington Street. As far as the site plan approval requirements, much of these are similar to exactly what I just said, so I'm not going to take up your time and go through each one of them. But to summarize kind of the entire piece, talks about cut and fill. There is no significant earthwork done. When we redo the sewer, the sewer system, we probably are going to have to excavate that. Mark Ryan has already discussed that with the applicant. They have a plan. Should this vote, should this board vote appropriately and say yes, right, say, hopefully, and say yes, we can determine what's appropriate. My apologies. There are no significant trees. There are stormwater management. Basically, what little stormwater there was was designed in the 1950s, and it's never been upgraded. Mark has a couple of comments, talking about infiltrating a half-inch of water off of the roof runoff, which I believe is in Ilex's letter. We don't have any problem with that, and we would actually ask that the Board condition, if you so see fit, approval on working with Mark to design a system that meets his satisfaction. And we believe that is well within the possible. We've talked about pedestrian vehicular access and ingress. We have had the plans reviewed by the Fire Department. Captain Campanio was at the meeting last Thursday. Regrettably, I might be speaking for him, but he didn't have any issues with the process. We will have to go through two different permitting procedures with the Fire Department. We're aware of that. He's made his concern, not concerns, but items that he will ask to be addressed known. We're sprinkling the building. He's happy with that. I believe it's also code, so we should be fine there. There are no scenic views that we're obstructing. We aren't intruding visually onto other spaces. Again, we're not adding anything to the building, so the neighbors don't have to worry about two stories now, parks looking down into them or anything. It's literally the building that's there. As far as glare from headlights and light intrusion, again, we've supplied a photometric plan. We have added screening along the back, so if somebody pulls into the driveway, it's not going to go into the next-door neighbors. And the last couple talk about, actually, there's a few more than a couple, but the last few do talk about using materials and character of the neighborhood. Again, all we're doing is cleaning up the existing building and making it look nice. As far as groundwater and wastewater and other substances, this is a clean building. It's going to stay that way. We're not manufacturing anything here, not allowed to, and it's residential. So, everything will be handled with the sewer appropriately. We don't believe there will be any issue with that. As far as the roof runoff, again, I've mentioned that Mark Ryan is going to work with us, and we're going to design a system that meets his requirements. We comply with the provisions of the zoning bylaw. The planning, your Board also has design standards, lighting, noise, landscaping, stormwater management, site development, pedestrian vehicular access and aesthetics, as well as utilities. The only thing that we really haven't addressed thus far is utilities. The building is served by town sewer and water, and it has already electrical, cable, and telecommunications from its days at the bank. All of these will be upgraded, but for the most part, most of that will be taking place inside of the building. If we do have to trench something, which is possible with the water service, again, Mark Ryan has already addressed that in his head as the DPW Director, and we'll work with him to do that. That, in a nutshell, is our project. With your permission, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Murphy, just briefly, to tell you a little bit about himself and what he's wanting to do in his own words, and then I would open it up to questions. Sean.
Well, thank you, Phil. I think that's certainly covered most of it, and thank you, Board, for hearing us today. We're, so we're a small real estate firm, father-son type of thing. I grew up in Norwood, spent 35 years in this town, love this town. I actually opened my first bank account in this bank. So, pretty iconic. I think, we think that building's a beautiful building. We think it's an iconic piece of Norwood Center. As Phil mentioned, you know, when you buy these things or analyze these things to buy these things, you kind of come up with a bunch of different scenarios. We felt keeping the building as is, staying within the building as is, and trying to retrofit what we had was the best option. And, you know, when we put our bid in to do so, we were lucky enough to win on that analysis. So, that's kind of the approach we took. We, you know, we certainly have our challenges with a building like this. These buildings were built to last. You know, if there's ever a war, I'll invite you all to the building because you will be safe in there. So, they, you know, they create these challenges. They're, they're, they're not the easiest buildings to retrofit. You got to work within the footprint that's there. We pulled in an architect, Peter Vanco, who specializes in these kind of repurposed redevelopment, older buildings, older schools. That's kind of his specialty. We think he did a great job trying to fit what we were, maximize what's there without losing the, the character of what the purpose of the bank is. You know, again, we got roughly 600, 1,600 square feet of commercial on the first floor, 1,300 square feet of commercial on the basement floor. Ideally, if we could get a small boutique bank, one of those, you know, chase lounge banks, that would be great. Not sure that's going to happen. Maybe we could pull Mr. Mackey out of South Norwood, bring him into the center of town. But I think you're going to find, you know, on the outside, really, it's going to be an improvement. It's going to be lush. It's going to be vibrant. We're bringing in a ton of landscape. We actually reduced the parking to fit, you know, snow storage, handicap, some seating for tenants out back, dumpster on site. So, we work in, there's about 900 square feet in the front of the building to kind of do this private, public access seating area. We got some seating and tables on the right side that we were going to kind of work with Perks, but Perks is no longer. I'm not sure what's going in.
Cafe.
Oh, is it? Yeah. Okay. So, that intention will probably continue to hold. As far as the residential units, you know, this building's very cool on the inside. The old lobby, which is now kind of cut off with these drop sailings, actually is two stories up. It's got this incredible plastered crown molding, coffered ceiling. It's really beautiful, which we're going to try to incorporate in the second-floor units. So, really going to try to keep that character of the building and incorporate it into the units that are, that are going to be on that. It butts up against the residential, residential business zoning. So, our thought was in the back of the building, a nice transition to the residential piece that continues up Day Street would be townhouses. And they fit nice in the building, so they're two-story, two-bedroom townhouses, access from the back. So, it kind of gives that nice buffer between the two zones, commercial on the front of the building, residential on the back, that flows right into the residential neighborhood behind it. So, again, I think, you know, we, we think this building's really a beautiful building, iconic to the town. We wanted to preserve it, work within. It created its challenges on the site as well as on the inside, but I think the plan we put together, I hope you guys agree, is, is something that will work for everybody.
Great. Joe, I just have a few questions.
Sure.
It's a historic building. Everyone's been saying that. How, how old is the building? Does anyone know?
Nineteen sixteen.
Nineteen sixteen.
Yeah. Well, it started, it was the first, it was the Norfolk County Trust.
Yeah.
It was the first, name of the first bank.
Yeah.
And then it was Bay Bank and everything else along.
Fleet, Bay Bank Fleet.
Yeah.
Fleet was what I.
It was originally Norfolk County Trust.
And you had your first account there?
I did, as a little boy. I remember the ceiling, and I remember the phone operator. I used to sit in the second floor. There was a window.
Yes, exactly.
And the phone operator sat up there, and when calls came to the bank. And the phone operator sat up there, and when calls came to the bank, and she could look down into the.
Oh, I tell everybody, it's the president of the bank used to sit up there. Making sure everyone was working.
It was the phone operator, and that window up there.
Yeah. So you saw it when it was.
Oh, sure.
The two-story. Pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive.
About two years older than you.
And the square footage of the units, Russell?
Uh, they probably average about 700 square feet.
Each one, yeah?
Average, yeah. Some are bigger, some are smaller.
Even the two-story ones?
The two-story are, that's a good question.
About 800.
Yeah, about 800.
Okay.
Three, yeah, about 400 on the first floor, 400 on the second floor.
Are these apartments or condos or?
These are apartments. So our business is rentals, apartments. That's what we do.
Sure. Ernie, you have some? How does someone get to the lower floor?
So there's, there's an exterior stairwell and an interior stairwell, along with a chairlift for any handicap.
Okay.
No elevator.
There's no elevator. We have, yeah, we got a waiver on the elevator to do a chairlift, approved.
Ernie, do you have something?
I do. First of all, personally, thank you, because I think, you know, a lot of, myself included, a lot of people in town were always concerned what's going to happen to that building when, you know, Bay Bank get out of there, and it was going to be torn down or whatever. So personally, I just want to thank you for keeping it the way it is and what you're doing.
Well, we appreciate that.
As far as your plan, I think you touched on most of the things. You touched on the outdoor lighting for the parking lot. You touched on landscaping, you touched on snow removal, you touched on dumpster. I did read somewhere in there about a bike rack. I don't care if.
There's a bike rack out front.
Right.
There was in the last.
It's going to have to take and be brought in.
Yeah, the last meeting was, thought of bringing it back.
As far as your waivers, I have no problem with any of them. The third one, the drainage calculations, if Mark Ryan is good with it, I'm good with it. The 50 feet, I think what you're doing for the town and preserving that building is well worth 10 feet of bylaw. As far as the parking, you've got, 11 spaces are needed to meet the zoning for the residents, residents, right?
Yes.
And you've got, what, 18?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. So you got it.
Yes.
As far as commercial, you know, there's a million stores on Washington Street that don't have any parking. So as long as you meet the residential and you exceed it, I'm good. So I don't have any issues with your parking. We said the elevators, any storage in the basement for residents? I didn't.
So there's a mechanic.
The mechanic's room.
The basement's a bit of a quagmire, the way it's built. It's got vaults down there. It's one of those, we got to kind of get in, in it really to define exactly what it's going to be. There's just, there's a lot going on down there. So they got, they have that old, they have an old vault, a file vault, that's probably, I don't know, 30 feet wide, 30 feet long by 20 feet wide. So there's space to work around there.
I think I still have some money in there.
Trust me. I have gone through that pretty intensely to find a treasure.
I think I've touched on, the only other thing is, and it's just architectural, there's not a lot of windows in these apartments, but.
Yeah, so we're working with a historical consultant to register this and go through it, and because of that, you can't touch the outside.
Yeah.
If you do, if you go down that road. We're in the process, I'm not, there's no promises.
Yeah, yeah, Phil. I just, again, thank you. I think it's a wonderful project. I think it'll be, you know, I think uptown, people that want to live uptown, it's, you know, it's great. And, you know, like I said, Perks is getting turned over to another place, and like I said, you know, businesses will find the people. And so just thank you. I like the project, and I.
Thank you.
Support it.
Let Debbie go first.
This is Homewood.
Thank you. Love that you're leaving the outside of the building, because it is a great building. What are you doing with the vault, the vault is, you're going to leave it?
So there's actually, let's see, there's four vaults in the building. The one probably everyone is familiar with when you walk in is the larger one. That's lined with at least half inch steel. The door alone is 30,000 pounds. We have to keep that one. The cost to remove that is outrageous.
It'll be W's timeout.
Yeah, unless somebody's looking to buy a vault door, then we can talk. The other, the other, the other three vault, well, the other two vaults on the second floor and the first floor are going to be demoed, and the vault in the basement is likely going to be demoed as well.
And the dome, I know there's a dome up there. You're going to include that in the apartment?
The dome? The dome?
Is there a dome at the top of the glass something?
That's been closed for probably 50 years.
It's still up there though, isn't it?
It's been framed over, rubbered over.
Have to look at it.
My only concern was, we got something from the lighting department saying if they had to put a lighting pad in, it would be a 12 by 12. Is that something you think we're going to have to do, or? That was from the lighting department.
Yeah, no, they gave options. There's conduit in the ground that we would use as the option and not the pad rope.
Okay. And when the project is done and you have commercial or apartments, what do you do about signage?
I think it's going to be pretty simplified. The Bank of America had some signage on the columns that they actually like carved out of the flute. So it'd be probably something simple like that, the way they had it before.
Okay. Again, I'm in agreement with a couple of my board members, I think we wanted to save that building for downtown, and thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Derek, good that you're saving the building, go through the process of the historic preservation. So I understand about the windows, keeping them. Good. I was going to ask about the pad for the transformer. Thank you, Debbie, for asking that, and you guys are looking into that. Bike racks, there's a comment about moving them more to the rear.
Yeah.
You know, where the, the store storage and everything. Is it possible to use the vault?
So that was brought up. The only thing is ADA compliance. I'm not, we talked about it, we're going to look into it, but because of ADA rules, I don't think it is.
You probably for one, you have to do it for all. All right. Don't really have much. I mean, you guys get a good presentation.
Thanks.
There's what the public has to say.
I just have a quick one, and forgive me if I'm not seeing this on the plan. Where are you picking up the extra 2,000 square feet?
So there's, on the back, so there's the two-story.
Yeah.
And then on the back, there was an addition, I think, in the 60s it was done, 50s or 60s?
You're adding another story to it?
So it's not adding, it's just, and then the square feet in the basement.
Gotcha. I will echo everybody's point, this is a great project. We're excited to see the building.
Joe, just on the roof, there's no mechanical up there, you're all set.
There is mechanic, there's currently, yeah, there's a huge chiller, or not chiller, condenser, and there is a mini split condenser up there. And that's likely where that massive one-unit condenser is now, is probably where we'll house the smaller mini split condensers. So I don't think, what you see now is not going to expand, it's going to be about the same footprint to hold the unit condensers on the mini splits.
So they don't have AC and?
Yeah, so, yeah, because of the, trying to run ductwork and piping, it's a challenge. So we're going to keep it local to the unit and run, and run it off of mini splits, so heat and cooling.
On the parking, you'll designate, you'll have designated parking?
Yeah, we'll have to either number them, or reserved, or some sort of.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question if I could.
Sure.
Yes?
Yes, Debbie, go ahead.
So is the drive-through lane going to remain, it looks on the picture like we're leaving the drive-through lane?
Correct.
Or we used to go up and get cash, right? So are you leaving that?
Yeah, we're, our intent is to leave it, to keep our options open on commercial. As I'm sure many of you know, that center of town has struggled getting commercial tenants in there. We didn't want to kind of cut our feet out from under us by removing it. So as it stands, we would like to keep it just to, you know, present maybe a better option for a tenant.
It was never a good fit, because you pulled out on Dade Street, it was never a good fit, but would be a great place for green, for a jet. You got to make some money. Okay, thank you.
Do you want to weigh in before we go to the public?
Sure. So I, I think there's been a lot of progress on these plans. I have to commend the applicant. We've been working collaboratively with department heads for quite some time, and a lot of the changes that were requested by town staff have been made. I think with any historical retrofit, right, you're, you're working against a series of pre-existing conditions, not all of which conform to our current standards. But I think the waiver requests are reasonable, given the fact that this is a preservation project. The comments that I would have about this, as far as recommended conditions, if the board were to consider approval of this item tonight, would be conditional approval based on the stormwater infiltration, as requested by the town engineer, which it sounds like the applicants agree with too. I would recommend a condition, just saying that any signage to be placed on the building would have to return to the board for minor site plan review, as the bylaw requires in the central business district. And then the last comment is about the, it was mentioned, I think in your memo. Initially, a first draft of these plans had include, included fully enclosed interior bedrooms, which were later removed because of a lack of emergency egress without having windows. So these are, you know, kind of like den spaces, not bedrooms.
I think a lot of people work from home now. An office space is probably a benefit to renting.
Yeah, so what I would, just because we do see this occasionally, usually after a building, if it changes hands in the future, obviously, those have been removed in this current iteration, and I think there's a good, you know, incentive for, you know, future tenants to keep it that way. But I would recommend some sort of a condition against framing outdoors to create bedrooms in the future, just because that is a code violation. But those are the only comments I have. I would recommend that you hold votes on each of the waivers before having a vote on the items. This is a special permit and site plan review. Derek can vote on the special permit, but not on the site plan.
Okay. I just asked counsel, do you interrupt to review the conditions, and you're satisfied?
I am. The only addition I would add, I totally understand where Sarah's coming with, from with the bedrooms. If you're going to impose such a condition, just leave it open for us to comply, if that's possible. I mean, we are in the midst of the historic process. If we actually get the designation, then that's a dead issue. If we don't, we might ask to put some windows in, which then would meet code. And so we don't have a problem working with the town, but I don't want it to be, you can never do this, that's all I ask.
Yeah, was caught in between this timing with the historical piece, that it's.
I think the, the units I was referring to were fully interior and wouldn't have the opportunity for windows to be placed on the outside.
Those are all gone.
Either way, without the condition in the zoning, putting doors on those rooms without windows would be a code violation, so the town would still have enforcement control.
Absolutely.
On a building code violation. Often, the planning board may consider including it in the condition as well, to allow for enforcement under the zoning. But that's at the board's discretion.
Just, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. So to Mr. Mackey's comment that we would put it to comply, comply with, to reword what you, what your point was and what Mr. Mackey's point was, I'm a little.
You could say to, doors may not be added to create bedrooms that don't comply with building code standards.
Is that fine?
Yeah, that's absolutely fine.
That would be the intent.
In the worst-case scenario, it's not my deal, but if you had to add some windows in the back or something, I mean, it's the front of the building that, that's what people look at.
Yeah, the issue's not the addition of a bedroom, it's the addition of a bedroom. That's not code compliant, but therefore.
Right, so we'll, as long as that wording works.
That works fine.
Gotcha. All right, this is a public hearing, I imagine, is anybody in the building or online have any comments? If you do, please provide your name and address if you want. We haven't, sorry. Thank you, gentlemen.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Doyle. My address is 12 Sumner Street. I sit on the Historic Commission, and we think this is the best project that has come before the board, because it's keeping the building intact, and it's a neoclassical, and there's only two buildings in this town that fit that description. The building was built in 1916. The fact they're trying to get it listed, and it's already on MACRIS, and Historic Commission is trying to get the Highland Cemetery with St. Gabriel's and the Morris House listed on the Historic National Register. It's a long process, it's a lot, a lot, a lot of paperwork and everything, so I think it's great. It fits in how Norwood wants to be, without having huge apartment complexes and that. So I think it's great, and I hope you guys really vote for it.
Thank you so much. Any other comments in the room? Start with, oh, Sherman.
My name is Toni Esco. I live on Endicott Street, and I am the Vice Chair of Norwood Historical Commission. Just to add a few more compliments to the proposal, this building has been on state MACRIS, the Massachusetts Cultural Resource Information System, for 35 years, and we have known it as a notable building. And it was designed by William G. Appam, the same architect of Town Hall and of Norwood Theater and of the Masonic Temple and numerous other buildings in town. Because Norwood does not own the building, the commission cannot initiate national historic registration, but this is the first I've heard that perhaps the proponents might entertain that, and that is a thrilling piece of information, and it is a long process. So we are delighted to hear that the exterior of the building is being respected. It is large, and it is strong and imposing for a reason, because it was built in the early 1900s, when Norwood was going through a very prosperous period promoted by, called the Willett era, and when a lot of the buildings in Norwood Center were going away from woodwork into stone and brick and mortar, as they say, that period. And so it has a lot of importance in the early business development of Norwood in the 90, even, even the light department was founded around 1907. I mean, this was a very prosperous time, when these buildings were being built. And so its, its building style reflects the importance of the era. So we're thrilled to hear that they want to keep the integrity in the architecture, of the architecture. And online, on the MACRIS system, there is a multi-page printout. It also described, described some of the beautiful features that were on the inside, which I'm not sure all exist, but one of them was a quoted beautiful rose Tennessee marble floor. I don't know if any of that still exists. There's some American redwood, beautiful woodwork, and while they're allowed to do adaptive reuse, I would hope, and I think I heard that, it's hard to hear sometimes when you're sitting back there, that whenever possible, that whatever is maximally feasible, that you try to incorporate some of those beautiful features, salvage them, maybe move them somewhere else if you have to, if you can save the floor and keep the floor, I don't know. But we are thrilled to hear that they want to be responsible developers with this property. And while Norwood does not have a historic district, and I want to say not yet, but if someday any part of Washington Street were to become included in one, certainly the preservation of this bank building would be a great contributor to such a district. So I want to compliment the plans so far that we hear from a historic preservation point of view. It's wonderful, and we're glad that the building will be made. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in the room?
Judith Howard, and Chair of the Norwood Historical Commission. I think this is a lovely, lovely program, and they plan to anchor Norwood Center. And I was just going to ask Mr. Mackey, if they'd be kind enough to give us an extra copy, or a couple of extra copies of your presentation that you made here today. Also, I would love it if they would apply to the Massachusetts Historic Commission to put this building on the National Register of Historic Places. The commission is in the process of putting two right now on the. The commission is in the process of putting two right now on the registered. It takes two years for the beginning of an application to its final solution and approval. But I think this is a lovely thing, so I would like to compliment both Ms. Mackey, and I didn't get your name, Sarah.
Sean Murphy.
Oh, nice to meet you, Mr. Murphy. But, so, we would just like to confirm what you have just mentioned in your presentation here. So...
Appreciate your support.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Howard. Anybody else online or anything, or are we also with comments? All right, I think that will conclude the public comment. Ernie, you have something?
No, I was gonna make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, there's a motion. All right, motion to second. I guess we have to do a roll call, because Debbie's away. So Mrs. Homewood, a motion to conclude the public hearing.
Yes.
Ernie?
Yes.
So Debbie Homewood, yes, Ernie Pachkovski, yes.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Brian Heskey, aye.
And?
Turk Mason, aye.
Okay. So 5-0 concludes the public hearing. Mr. Mackey?
Fine, thank you very much.
All right, all right, is there any further? Mr. Pachkovski?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion if the board is inclined to vote tonight. All right, I'll make a motion to approve with the...
Don't we have to?
Oh, let's do the waivers.
Let's do the waivers, right. And hold on, what is Derek, what is on?
Derek can vote on the...
Sorry, Ernie.
Yeah, so I would recommend the waivers be associated with the special permit also. So you would be voting on each of the waivers, and on this special permit motion, the site plan review motion should be made separately, and that would just be the...
Can you do the waivers collectively, or is it separate?
No, we'll do them one at a time.
One at a time, okay. All right, I'm sorry, there's a, Ernie, it sounds like you're making more.
Derek.
Mrs. Homewood's got a question.
Is there something in there they need to come back to us for signage?
I recommend that as a condition.
That's a condition, Deb.
Yep.
We're doing the waivers first.
And I get it with the windows to a certain extent, but Sarah, could you explain real quick, real digestively, about windows adding on? If it becomes a bedroom, they have to have a window, is that what you were saying before?
Yes, so under the building code, a bedroom needs to have a means of emergency egress, typically a window. So any bedroom that does not have a window, an exterior window, right now, there are none proposed, and I would recommend that it stay as designed that way, in order to continue to...
If they wanted to do windows, they would have to come back to the board, or to what?
That would be a determination of the building commissioner, whether or not that would trigger, you know, a minor modification, or something that would, can be considered major enough. My guess would be, it would depend where they were. Certainly, something that was exterior-facing towards public view would be considered significant enough to need to come back to the board, but that is the building commissioner's determination.
And none of the windows, the front wouldn't be impacted.
Yeah, it's not slow to blow in that building.
Yeah. Two feet.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve first waiver, 9.4.6.1, commercial zoning, a commercial frontage zone, allow a commercial frontage zone of approximately 52 feet where 60 is required. I'll make a motion to approve that waiver.
Second. Motion to second, so on that particular waiver, this roll call, Mrs. Homewood?
Yes.
Ernie Pachkovski, yes.
Joe Sheehan, yes.
Brian Heskey, yes.
Turk Mason, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion on 9.4.15.1, outdoor amenity space. Allow less than 10% of the land area to be dedicated, outdoor amenity spaces, and allow the outdoor seating areas as shown on the site plan. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, roll call. Debbie Homewood, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ernie Pachkovski, yes.
Joe Sheehan, yes.
Brian Heskey, yes.
Turk Mason, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion on 10.5.7.3, drainage calculations. Leave the requirement for drainage calculations in its entirety. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, roll call vote. Debbie Homewood, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ernie Pachkovski, yes.
Joe Sheehan, yes.
Brian Heskey, yes.
Turk Mason, yes.
And Mr. Chairman, on parking deviation, I don't know if this is a waiver, but I'm gonna make a motion anyway, that the board feels that they have the adequate parking necessary for this project. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Would you tell me how many spaces that is? Is that 23 spaces?
They have 16, and 11 are required.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to second. Mrs. Homewood, how do you vote? It's a parking waiver.
She thinks he's frozen.
Uh-oh, Debbie, you froze. One second.
Far out.
Let's go with the remainder of the board while we...
Ernie Pachkovski, yes.
Joe Sheehan, yes.
Brian Heskey, yes.
Turk Mason, yes.
All right, Debbie, are you back?
I can see you and hear you.
Oh, perfect, all right. So this was the parking waiver, and we're doing the roll call vote, you're the last one, how do you vote?
We're doing the parking waiver, I'm saying yes.
Okay, 5-0.
Now, are we adding above signage?
Not there yet.
Add it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the project with the following conditions: that the applicant meets the stormwater one-half-inch off-the-roof requirement, that any signage for commercial or any other signage, we have to come back before the board to fall under the downtown business district bylaw, and comply with zoning as far as bedrooms and egresses. I'm not quite sure if that's worded, but you know what I mean.
Sure, Sarah will get it.
That was up to three conditions?
And then stormwater infiltration.
I think that was number one, yeah.
Okay, there's a motion.
In addition to the standard conditions.
And then in addition to all standard, yes, conditions.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion to second. Debbie, did you hear everything, including the stuff that's signed?
Yes, I did, and I can hear it through all of that line.
Okay.
Yes, I heard it all, and that's motion number five, correct?
Yes, hold on, Sarah's clarifying something.
Is that for the special permit, your motion?
Yes, so, yes, not a site plan review, this is a special permit.
And that's, Derek votes it out, right? So, all right, so this is for the special permit, right? All right, Debbie, I'll start with you. Mrs. Homewood, how do you vote on the special permit application with the proposed conditions?
She's frozen.
You're frozen again.
Ernie Pachkovski, yes.
Joe Sheehan, yes.
Brian Heskey, yes.
Turk Mason, yes.
And hopefully you come back, Debbie.
Come back when you grow old, girl. Can you hear that sound, Ernie's too close?
Classic commercial.
All right, Debbie.
I need a four.
Debbie, can you hear?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, you came back, so, did you hear?
Okay, yes.
All right, roll call vote. Debbie Homewood, yes.
I hear you.
5-0. Gentlemen, congratulations. Now, we have one more, site plan, you're not voting.
I got an extra, you can autograph it for me, Sarah.
Okay, site plan review, do we have any motions, or?
I think, Mr. Chairman, we've discussed most of the issues that come up in site plan review. I've talked about lighting, we've talked about parking, we've talked about landscaping, we've talked about dumpsters, snow removal, exterior parking, everything. So if there's, Sarah, if you don't see any other issues on site plan review, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve site plan, give site plan approval to this project.
Second.
Motion to second, no comments from the planning? All right, there's a motion to approve the site plan in a second, roll call vote. Debbie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ernie Pachkovski, yes.
Joe Sheehan, yes.
Brian Heskey, yes.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, all right, good luck.
Appreciate it.
All right. Okay, the next matter on tonight's agenda is, there's a site plan modification request for 140 Morgan Drive.
Good evening, Daniel Campbell, Level Design Group, on behalf of the applicant. I have from Home Market Foods, with me Peter Tenhagen.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you mind just stopping a second? Just, yeah, we might let this clear out a little bit. So, it's, just to, just to keep the chaos... All right, resume.
No problem. I have with me tonight from Home Market Foods, Peter Tenhagen, Tim Sheets, and Wally Malouf, who can answer questions about the facility itself, operations and parking should any come up, and attorney Hirschfield is with us as well. So we're asking for a minor modification or a modification of the site plan approval, as well as a modification of our parking permit for the facility, based upon comments from the fire department and building inspector, post-construction of the two additions that were constructed from the approval in 2022, 2023. The approval granted us two building additions in the rear of the building, one for wastewater treatment, excuse me, one for process control, and the building additions themselves, constructed, fully ready to be turned on for the facility. However, there have been some concerns related to parking, some concerns related to safety, and we intended prior to acceptance or as-built of rectifying some of those situations. So the facility has been retrofitted with a few additional external fire department connections, FDC connections. It's to be retrofitted with a few more roof access points around the site. In the process, we're also looking to move process oil to the rear of the site, out of the interior of the site, and a boiler, cooking boiler, from the interior of the site to the exterior of the site. As part of the conversations, and part of our TRC two weeks ago, the fire department's concerned with the parking spaces that were originally approved around the rear of the site, in the truck, maneuvering truck parking area at the rear of the property. They've asked us to remove the parking spaces and replace them with truck queuing spaces, which we've done on the revised site plan. There is some process that's going to occur with how all of this is to roll out. For instance, right now, we have four potential spaces for truck queuing on the truck board in the rear of the site. Currently, there are the frac tanks, which are in those positions, the frac tanks can be removed as soon as the wastewater treatment plant can be turned on. Wastewater treatment plant can't be turned on until we have this meeting discussing parking. So it's, it will all fall together, unfortunately, it is piecemeal at this time. The site is primarily constructed, as you know, we approved a significantly larger parking lot on the south side of the site, 2022, 2023. That parking lot has been constructed with the two building additions, all of the process control tanks that go along with it, and equipment. The site is basically ready to be turned on once we have approval from this board for their modification. I am certainly happy to answer any questions. If Sarah wants to pull up the plans, I can at least point you to the couple of locations that we're looking at.
So these are newly revised?
Perfect. First sheet is fine, too.
Okay. Is the first sheet, should be okay?
First sheet's fine. So what we're talking about is, this location around the rear of the site had approximately 35 parking spaces striped in this area. If you may remember from the previous approvals, we never really intended to use in parking spaces. It was purely an exercise in whether or not we could fit additional parking spaces on the site. The fire department has asked us not to even show them. They would like us to have a more realistic trailer space which were the operations that occur. And these four bays here, these are the three frac tanks which will be removed. There's positioning for four waiting trailers. These are the two oil tanks, as discussed. We have, excuse me, FDC connection here, here, roofie breast here, and here, another FDC connection, sorry, at this location, and then the boilers in this location. The boilers themselves replace a handicap parking space, members of the board that were on in 2015 here, that was renovated space for Home Depot Supply. So they had an independent handicap space and independent entrance. That entire space has reverted back to Home Market Foods. So placing the boilers there and consolidating the handicap spaces at the main entrance, where visiting personnel would be going in, makes sense. To do that, we're able to, instead of the four spaces, striped seven spaces, we've removed two angled spaces and created two parallel spaces along the driveway, remaining a 20-foot-wide driveway for the fire department. We're 27 and a half as we come around, and the fire department has asked us to reduce these 10 spaces to compact spaces, to provide a minimum 20 feet at the corner, which we did have previously as part of the previous approval, but since this is just striped area, it does give them more room to maneuver. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions, but the numbers lie, we had 261 parking spaces approved as part of the previous site plan approval. The current plan shows 219. Of those 219, the one row in the back was 27 spaces, another row in the back was 14, so the majority of those spaces that are removed are directly along the rear of the site.
Tony?
Yeah, you guys are in a tight spot down there. I mean, you're up against wetlands, and I mean, all other things. So you gotta take away these, and you're gonna put more queuing in the back.
Correct.
So how many total tractor-trailers can you queue on your property at one time, when you go ahead and do this?
Once everything is complete, you can queue seven tractor-trailers without affecting any other movements on property.
Seven.
Seven, correct.
Is that, because we've had the, I was on the board when you guys first came, and, you know, and I know there's been issues with trucks being, you know, parked down Morgan Drive, or whatever it is, Astor, I'm not sure which one that is, but, you know, down the street. And I remember at the time, way back, I thought one of the conditions way back was that you guys were gonna park tractor-trailers up on Route 1 up down in Foxborough with the truck stock and call them in?
That was...
Did that ever happen?
That was this approval, and for the most part, that occurred.
Okay.
But some are still independent truckers that came or went without that type of queuing. So when construction first started on the site, we started to have an issue on truck queuing. That issue was quickly resolved between the building inspector and the police department. Home Market Food did retain off-duty police to police the area to make sure that the trucks weren't queuing, and everybody has sort of learned the process.
So you're basically picking up three trucks with this new, three, queuing for three more trucks?
So we're...
This is what you have now?
Realistically, we're picking up all seven. Right now, there are trucks that park in the rear, or trucks that are pulling around or waiting to pull around to the side. However, they are currently parked on what we had as automotive parking. The frac tanks, or the separation tanks that currently exist at the back of the site, having to do with the wastewater, are in the position of where four of those trucks are going to go. So as I said, it's kind of a, after this vote, the building department will entertain turning the wastewater treatment plant on. By turning the wastewater treatment plant on, they can remove the frac tanks, then we have four parking spaces that are completely open.
And with this new, the fire department can still get around?
Correct.
So I guess the bigger question is, and it's for you, I'm glad you're getting more trucks on your property.
Yes.
That helps everybody. With the reduction in car parking, you, the times I've down there, you guys are pretty full, and I guess, how is this gonna affect your, like, employee shift change parking?
Sure.
I mean, where are these people gonna go? Or do you still feel you have enough adequate parking for your employees?
There's a few ways to address that. First, Home Market Foods did prepare a memo having to do with parking specifically. Number of employees in...
Or do you, or do you still feel you have enough adequate parking for your employees?
There's a few ways to address that. First, Home Market Foods did prepare a memo having to do with parking specifically. Number of employees and shift employees. If you've been down there any time in the last six months, you know that the parking lot on the side of the building...
Yeah, true.
Still has some staging materials in these last...
I've been down there, but not in the property.
So we have 26 spaces even now that's currently taking up with staging equipment. And moreover, those parking spaces at the rear of the site have never actually been parked with automobiles.
So you feel you have enough parking?
We have enough parking. They also have a rental lot down the street from where they are, which provides adequate parking in addition to what we have.
So you're, the bottom line is, we approve all of this, you get your trucks, all that, you still have enough parking for your employees?
Correct. We still have enough parking, and as part of the project that we just constructed, we also constructed sidewalks for everybody to get from point A to point B.
Okay, fine. That's it, Mr. Chairman, I'm satisfied with that answer.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Jim?
Just, and you've, where does the building inspector stand at this point? Is he on board with this?
The building inspector really was waiting for the fire department. The fire department was waiting for this modified set of plans. The, he's not the chief.
Deputy.
Deputy. Deputy chief commented back last week, he wanted to verify specifically one distance. He wanted to make sure it was more than 20 feet, it was just hard to read on the plan. It's 27.7. He said he was satisfied, when the site is fully operational, he wants to drive his truck around again, just to make sure that no one's doing things that they're not supposed to.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Homewood, do you have any questions or thoughts?
I do.
All right.
I do. Ernie is correct, and I, all due respect, I don't know that the problem with the twelts being out on the road, I can't speak for the last six months, but it's been kind of ongoing, and I didn't talk to the police department to find out how many. You're up against it, I understand that. I also would like to, I'd like to bring up the Conservation Commission with the stormwater and the runoffs.
Certainly.
And you have a letter attached, which I can't pull up on my screen and still stay on this, that you need to be in compliance. Do we have any way of finding out?
She froze again.
Jimmy, you're frozen.
Conservation issues wouldn't be here anyway, right?
We have a conservation permission attached to this, it was in our package.
There was. If you don't mind me answering in order, the conservation probably was present at the TRC meeting. The comments were related to, to make sure we maintained compliance, not to make sure we came into compliance. So there was a conservation permit as part of this last go-around for different things associated with conservation from the last 10 years, for instance. Those were rectified with a replication area down near where we put the detention basin on this property. It hasn't been closed out yet, mostly because we haven't closed the other parts out yet. So we don't really wanna close one without closing the other. Now, her commentary was mostly, we have to continue following our O&amp;M plan. The big problem in the past has been whether or not the O&amp;M has been followed, or whether or not a tractor-trailer is doing what they're supposed to do. By having these tractor-trailer spaces, we're more controlling the movements of those trucks in and around the property, which'll help us maintain some of the things that Carly was looking at. Rightfully so, she's, she's making sure that we're following the O&amp;M that was filed and approved by the Conservation Commission.
What's an O&amp;M?
Operation and maintenance.
Okay, so I remember way back when we took that, you can't see because I can't, that little, we took one out at the top right corner.
Yep.
It was a retention basis, way back, five, six years ago, right?
It, it's been a while, yeah.
Okay, so that...
Froze again. She doesn't, she doesn't...
Frozen meatball.
I, I got the basics of it. On the bottom right-hand corner, if you remember, is part of the application that was approved within the last two years and currently in construction. We proposed a fairly sizable new detention infiltration basin at the bottom right-hand corner adjacent to the sewer easement. The intention that detention basin was not only the new construction parking, but it was also maintain some of the previous parking as well as the previous trucking areas. In part of that, in our application to conservation, there was some cleaning that occurred at the back part of the site adjacent to the wetlands that surrounds the east side. That cleaning was completed, Carly has inspected it. And lastly, there was a replication area for floodplain and wetlands adjacent to outfalls. Because the outfalls were coming more into compliance, they took up a little area of the wetlands. By taking up an area of the wetlands, we created a replication area. The replication area itself by email has been approved, but we haven't applied to officially close out that documentation yet because we haven't closed out this.
All right, I appreciate you making those... Say it again. I appreciate you answering those, and I think this project, as we already said, has been going on, on and off, and it's the only time it gets eyes on it, to see if these things are actually, we move around, we move retention basins, we move parking spots, and if we can get the trucks to not back up on Morgan Street, that would be a good thing.
I agree with that, and, and we've been working hard over the last six, nine months to make that occur, and this will certainly go a long way to that.
Sarah, are there any department comments?
Have, have...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We haven't closed out the other one, so do we have, do we see all of this, since it's just a parking lot, we don't do that, Sarah?
No, but there are a number of building permits that are actively in process or have been filed and not yet approved, so the site plan modification approval is necessary to continue with a series of other projects that are ongoing at the site.
Okay, then I just have to keep chasing after and see if we're done, correct?
Well, we'll, we'll be coming back to you, hopefully, within the next six months to let you know everything was done.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you. So Sarah, comments from the department?
Yeah, so the department heads did, did meet with the applicant and engineering team, and at that time, the original plan that had been submitted was based, you know, on this kind of former iteration of the plan where there were a lot of kind of parking spaces shown on the plan that were not intended to be used and were not used. So we kind of reconvened on how the board and the department review plans now, which is really, give us a plan showing exactly how you're gonna use the site, and we'll vote on that, to make sure that if and when the fire truck actually does come to the property, right, everything's designed in a way to ensure access. So the applicant did submit that redesign, that's what you have in front of you, and I can see, you know, a lot of these changes were made and addressed. I will say, and I will take responsibility for this, I know I was out of the office last week, so it may be a ship's passing in the night issue, so I'll take responsibility for that, but I am not in receipt of any comments from the fire department on the review of the revised plan.
Sure.
So by no means discrediting the applicant here, and they've been very good about working with those departments individually. My personal recommendation would be to continue this hearing until the board has those review comments from fire and building in particular. My principal concerns, you know, are the same, just the circulation around the site specifically. I am pleased to see that there's additional truck queuing spaces, I know that's been a concern of the board, and also ZBA had also had a...
At one point.
Review at one point that addressed the truck staging issues. So obviously, we wanna get that all buttoned up. I'm pleased to see that progress. I personally would recommend that the board wait until they've had a full review and comments from fire and building.
What's the next available, February 24th?
February 24th.
All right.
So I believe the applicant would be amenable to the continuance with hopefully a recommendation of staff to the building department. The building department's really waiting so that we can turn on the wastewater treatment plant. Wastewater treatment plant's fully constructed. If we're February 24th and we could turn on the wastewater treatment plant, it's entirely possible those frac tanks could be removed before we ever come back, and we could be talking about what's actually occurring on the site, not what could occur.
I would think so.
I think that makes sense.
Makes sense. Sarah's very good persuasive of kicking them, you know.
He was very good. He wanted us to attend this, this hearing first, and as long as there were no, you know, very large bombshells, it was more of a Sarah speaking to him that, that, you know, we're, we're moving in the right direction.
Mr. Chairman, just, I would make a recommendation, I mean, a, a... A motion that we continue until February 24th at 7:00 in this building for the, you know, the purpose of taking in information from the departments, and I don't see any, on our, on our end, any issues. So I think it would be, you know, procedurally just to take in the information.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mrs. Homewood, if you're hearing us, there's a motion, a second, to continue this to 2:24 at 7:00 PM?
I am hearing you, and I agree with the motion, but can we let him take out, can we split the baby? Can he take out those tanks and still have a continuance?
I don't know that the planning board has the authority to make that particular decision. That is at the discretion of the building commissioner. However, I will do my best to expedite review by department heads and make sure that if fire is indeed A-OK with these plans, that the building department has that information as soon as possible.
Okay.
I would like to get more information on what's outstanding and what still needs to be done, because this is a big pot of spaghetti.
Right. But a motion, a second, Debbie, are you ready to vote on a continuance?
I am.
All right, so roll call. Debbie Homewood, how do you vote on the continuance, February 27th, 24th?
Yes.
Freddie Pachkovsky, yes.
Joashin, yes.
Brian Hashi, yes. All right, that's it. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next item on tonight's agenda is minutes.
I won't worry about that, because we're just gonna go to minutes and it's a... I mean, there's no...
Yeah, we're still up.
Yeah, no, I'm...
I'm changing.
He doesn't really...
We thought you were ready to get out of here.
All right, so we'll take a moment, but the next matter on tonight's agenda will be the town meeting update.
Yes, so, as you know, the board submitted a short series of articles to the selectmen by their deadline for the March special town meeting warrant. At their hearing the following week, the selectmen took a vote not to hold a March town meeting and instead take those articles up in May. There were four articles. Town meeting is, as you know, labor-intensive and costs the town quite a bit in resources. So I, my understanding is that their determination was, it made sense, particularly since there was not any real sense of urgency with each of those.
Nothing dramatic.
No, and we will be able to, the one that has a deadline, as you know, is the floodplain overlay, but we have six months from the date of the release to approve those changes, and May special town meeting will still put us comfortably within that deadline. So we had initially anticipated holding public hearings on those articles in coming weeks. We are going to hold off on that and schedule them in one time when we've got a, kind of lighter agenda, a little bit closer to town meeting. But I wanted to make sure that you are aware of that, so there will be no, no March special town meeting.
All right.
There's your update. I have another update for you.
Sure.
If you don't mind, and I think where Rob here tonight, he would probably do this, but I'd like to make a small update on the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. It's just, we're encouraging all boards and committees across town to kind of give a public service announcement to the boards, to anybody who may be tuning in and watching the board meeting. The comprehensive plan is rolling out Phase Two, which is very heavy on public engagement. This is really where the rubber hits the road on reaching out to those residents and businesses in the town and really trying to get everybody's feedback and involvement in the plan. So we have a website, tinyurl.com/norwoodcp. We also have direct links on our town's website. We've posted on our social media pages, on Facebook and Instagram as well. We have flyers with all the information in the community development office and in municipal buildings across town. Some ways that people can get involved, there is a survey that is open. We also have a cool online crowd mapping exercise where users can zoom in on different parts of the maps of town and insert their ideas of special things they'd like to see and dropping pins in those areas. And then we also have a community engagement tool that's a little bit new for us, it's called Meeting in a Box. Basically, anybody who attended any of our public engagement sessions last year and the year before for MBTA communities knows that we were really successful in getting feedback in small group discussions, inviting folks to kind of come together and, and sit with their neighbors and talk over a series of guided questions about, in that case, you know, housing specifically. We're kind of rolling that out on a larger scale, but a little bit more informally. So Meeting in a Box is a kit that the Cont Plan Steering Committee has created with a series of questions and guidance for people to host their own small group discussion meetings. We, it's our hope that all of you will invite your friends and your family and your neighbors, perhaps to your, your dining room table for, for dinner, or perhaps out to one of our great local restaurants for a drink or a snack, grab one of our Meeting in a Box kits and have a discussion about, about Norwood and its future. We give you everything you need to host this discussion. It should be no more than an hour or so. You'll have the place to jot down your answers and then send all of that back to the planning department, and we'll incorporate all of that feedback into the final plan. So we're doing something different. It is a little informal for those who would prefer to hang out with their friends and family instead of coming to town hall and listening to me or Ernie or someone else speak for an hour. And we're hoping that, you know, if you host a meeting and invite some folks over, that they'll be inspired to then host their own meeting, and by doing this, we'll be able to hopefully hear from more people who wouldn't traditionally participate in this process. So I just wanted to put it on everybody's radar that we have those. I have materials that I can hand out to all of you to take home with you and maybe distribute in the places that you frequent around town. We have postcards and QR codes and all of that. But now's really a great time to spread the word about the Cont Plan and the ways that people can participate, and that's my PSA about the Cont Plan.
We'll take a coffee for dinner, Joe. Do we bring a casserole?
I was gonna say, Debbie's gonna buy us all down to Florida.
Yeah, Debbie, are you inviting us to Florida?
Yes, come on down.
Can I, can I...
It is really, can I, just real quick, I did a Zoom with somebody else, I think it's at the senior center, because it keeps kicking me out, but I can still hear you.
Well, we're glad you're still able to, to follow along. It worked out.
She just froze again.
All right, the next matter on tonight's agenda is approval of meeting minutes from November 18th of 2024. Questions and concerns?
There was one amendment that Joe had submitted.
Okay.
That was posted to the packets, but Joe, if you wanna talk about that?
Well, it's just on the second page, number five, motion, it says motion two, Mr. Hatchey. It talked about illumination and that it would be extinguished. It says no less than one hour after closing. I think it's, it should be no more than one hour after closing.
Yeah, okay, you're right.
So that's just a change.
All right, can we just note that for the record? All right.
Make a motion to approve with Mr. Sheehan's change.
Any second? All right, roll call vote. Debbie, are you with us? We have a quorum with her.
Aye.
Oh, Debbie Homewood says aye to approve the votes.
Freddie Pachkovsky, aye.
Joashin, aye.
Brian Hashi, aye. Okay, I believe that that concludes our business this evening, unless I'm mistaken, so, entertain a motion, a jury.
Make a motion to... Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. Debbie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Ernie, aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Aye. Joshian, aye.
Brian Hachey, aye. Thank you all. Be well.